Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 22, 2025, meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. I'd like to, the first thing we normally do is have a moment of silence. So, we're going to stick to that, and I would like to mention a few things that I'm going to think about in our moment of silence. And one is all those unfortunate people suffered in the California wildfires. Second, I'm going to mention is our Capitol Police Officers who did not get the justice that they deserve. I'm saying that, that's the privilege of the Chair, and I'm allowed to say it. That's right. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to switch things up a little from the agenda because we want to give you all a chance to speak. So, I'm going to start with the Planning Commission Report, so Peg, if you will.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Commission, here to give a synopsis of our meeting from last night, January 21. First item on our agenda was the reorganization of the Commission. The members in attendance voted to reappoint myself as Chair, Craig Deutsch as Vice Chairman, and Mary Donaldson as Secretary Treasurer. Next, we had land development for 413 Dorm Road preliminary as final plan. The Commission reviewed this plan to develop a five-acre parcel in the PS2 zoning district with two one-story buildings. One building will be a 10,000-square-foot daycare center with a 7,800-square-foot outdoor play area, and the second building will be 6,600 square feet for medical use with a total of 85 shared parking spaces. Both uses are permitted in this district. We reviewed our consultants' letters, and the applicant has agreed to comply with them. The Commission did not object to the few requested waivers. The members did have some concerns about impact on traffic, as did a number of Delancey Court residents and attendants. Our traffic engineer has agreed to investigate possible solutions to backups by working with the existing traffic lights, Wright Street and North Drive. PennDOT has stated that the intersection of Municipal Drive and Dorm Road does not warrant an additional traffic light. Commission recommends that the Board approve the plan, subject to compliance with our consultants' reviews and with further investigation of the existing traffic lights to avoid backups. Next, we had JMZO amendments. First was the wireless communications. Our planner will investigate possible locations to prevent larger tower devices. We recommend that the Board approve this amendment with the addition of these locations. Then, we have the zoning hearing board. This amendment clears up some outdated language and requirements because the Joint Planning Commission no longer exists as a separate entity. We recommend that the Board adopt this amendment. And then, we had billboards and the outdoor advertising signage. The Commission recommends that the amendment remove the table which bases size of signs on speed limits. We suggest that the outdoor signs be one-sided, limited to 16 feet in height, and 100 square feet in surface area. It's our understanding that Wrightstown existing billboard would need this requirement. In Newtown, there are off-premise signs that would only be permitted in the CC, the Convenience Commercial zoning district. And lastly, we had a resident that was in attendance to ask about the possible sewer treatment plant at Silver Lake Road. As the Commission did not have this as an agenda item, and we have no plans before us, we advise the residents to check the agendas for the Commission, Supervisors, and the Sewer Authority as plans are developed. We understand the consideration of the plant is in its early stages, and formal reviews are expected in the immediate future. That was all we had. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Driscoll? I'm sorry, I forgot to say that Mr. Davis is not here tonight because he had a grandchild, and he's down there, I think in Florida, with his new grandchild. So, we congratulate him on that, so, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is Barbara Simmons here? Kevin Antoine, we're going to invite you to speak next because, if not, I don't want you to wait until the end of the meeting. Kevin, why don't you come up? Put on the microphone, explain, tell, say your name and what you represent, which is very important.
I'm Kevin Antoine. I was the recent Chair of the Human Relations Commission here in Newtown Township for 2001 up until maybe a couple of weeks ago. I'm also the Associate Vice President for Bucks County Community College, Veteran Affairs, Student Affairs. I've been in higher ed for about 30 years. I've announced my retirement from Bucks. But I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Board for actually implementing the Human Relations Commission based upon the non-discrimination statute that the Board has here. And I, you know, want you all to know that however you feel about EEO, discrimination, DEI, these organizations are here to investigate anybody's claim. You could be white, you could be non-white, you can speak English or not speak English, male, female, younger, old, it doesn't matter. If you make a complaint, then we're obligated, these Commissions are obligated to see it through and do the investigation. So, Supervisor Snyder, I really appreciate the fact that there's a good working relationship with the Human Relations Commission and with the Township. I know Olivia and Beth are not here in the Towns Manager Office, but now they will rest up from not getting all my emails about where's the key fob and that sort of stuff, I'll get in and out of the building. But again, it was my humble experience to serve the Township in that capacity, and I enjoyed the time that I did it.
And we thank you for your service.
Can I ask Mr. Gallenheimer to come up and make an announcement?
Yes, thank you. I have the privilege of taking over as Chair of Newtown Human Relations Commission from Mr. Antoine. And we had our monthly meeting last Wednesday, and at that meeting, the members of the Human Relations Commission passed a resolution in tribute and honoring our former Chair. And if you, if the Board will indulge me, I'd just like to read a portion of it to the Board. The Human Relations Commission wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to Dr. Kevin L. Antoine for his significant and impactful leadership and service to the Commission. Dr. Antoine served as a voting member and Chair of the Commission from February 2021 until his resignation on January 1, 2025. Dr. Antoine's many achievements as Chair include his outreach and coordination with other Human Relations Commissions in Bucks County on issues involving important matters such as policing and education. He initiated a series of presentations from community and business leaders to brief the Commission on equality and inclusion efforts being promoted by their organizations. And under his leadership, as he mentioned a second ago, the Commission entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Pennsylvania Movement Relations Commission to enable the handling or collaboration in the handling of discrimination complaints in our Township. As detailed in a resolution that the Commission passed, he has, his service on the Commission was part of a lifetime of professional and personal commitment to promote civil rights and equality in our community. His time, energy, and effort on the HRC helped make our community a better place to live and work. And so, if I could conclude, the Commission wanted to thank Dr. Antoine for his dedicated service and commitment both to the Township and to the Human Relations Commission, and we were very appreciative of all his time and effort and expertise that he gave to us. Thank you.
This is Chair Person. I have copies of the resolution here. Maybe it's possible we can upload this to the website so other people can take a look at it. I'll let you hand them out if you like. Thank you.
We shall do so. One more thing before we get to our first round of public comment, and that's Barbara Simmons. If you could please come up and explain your project. I don't want to make you wait for, till the end.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I had trouble parking, or I would have been in here sooner. My name's Barbara Simmons, and I am formerly the Executive Director of the Peace Center. And when I retired about four years ago, I started working with an organization called Walking While Black, Love is the Answer. And Love is the Answer is an organization that works to heal rifts in the community that might be present between law enforcement and community members, vulnerable community members. And so, this interested me very much, and I began working on murals. So, to date, I've worked with the Falls Township community and their police department to put a mural there, Bristol Township as well, and Morrisville, and I'm getting ready to do a second one in Morrisville. But one of the things that I would love to do is a mural project in Newtown. And what that would entail would be, and I've been working with PennDOT on this, to use the walking bridge, the footbridge, that connects George School with Newtown. And a lot of George School students come into Newtown and use the business, utilize the businesses. And this would be a great place to have a unique mural that would use the chain-link fence to have the artwork be displayed. And so, it has to pass a design team at PennDOT so we can put forward some, what Newtown Township would think would be acceptable, and, as well as, this would involve George School students, County Rock students, Bucks County Community College students, and law enforcement in three different areas. So, it would be Newtown Township, Newtown Borough, and Midtown Township. And so, I'm excited about the project. I've been working with the Department of Justice on this, and so, we're currently working on one in Doylestown, and it's going to take time to move this forward to get, we have to put the application in, we have to get a design team together, and I've got volunteers already willing to do that. But I'm coming tonight to ask the approval of Newtown Township Supervisors if you would be open to being the group that submits the application to PennDOT.
I'm sure we can discuss that amongst ourselves and give you an answer at some point. I can't give you an answer right now. We'll have a consensus of the Board. But I think it's a beautiful idea, and I'd certainly like, you sent me a link with a lot of the chain-link designs.
And I can send those to the Board of Supervisors as well.
If you would do that, that would be appreciated because they're really, they're not what they are, they're just beautiful designs. And actually, the way you do it, they can be changed. It's like very versatile.
Exactly, and it's a community-building activity, and that's what I love about it. So, I'm going to leave you with a sort of a process, a description process, and then I'll look forward to hearing back from you, and I'll send links to the designs to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our first round of public comment. I would ask that Newtown Township residents would have a chance to speak first about items not on the agenda. Please state your name and where you live.
I'm Stephen Keely, reside at 63 Alfred's Court in Newtown on Delancey Court. And I know there's a lot of people here that are here for another reason based on the color of the shirts, so I'll be brief. I'm going to address the concerns we have about the traffic on Dorm Road with the development of this new daycare center that was referred to earlier, and the Medical Arts Building. The traffic study done for the builder indicates 796 trips over and above all the traffic that's already on Dorm Road, which is unbelievable. 118 trips during the 2:00 period in the morning, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and 124 trips in the evening between 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Just picture all these people that are trying to get in and out of this development, many of them making left turns, even though there's going to be a center-left turn lane provided. None of our residents are going to be able to safely pull out of our development because we won't be able to see the traffic coming south on Dorm Road. So, I'd like to propose, before the Board makes a final decision on this, and we've asked PennDOT to investigate some of this already, but we have a little bit more of a suggestion. There's two traffic lights, one at North Drive and one at Wrightstown Road that intersect with Dorm Road already. There's a very well-tried-out method of traffic regulation in New Jersey. Many of you may be familiar with the arrangement of Route 31 and the Pennington Circle. Washington Crossing Road intersects the Pennington Circle, and there are two sets of traffic lights north and south of the Pennington Circle that meter the traffic. I know PennDOT is interested in getting the traffic through here really quick, but proposing, and by the way, I happen to be on the Board of Directors of the Delancey Court, HOA, but I'm here as a concerned, very concerned private citizen, so just to put that in perspective. New Jersey DOT has developed a metering system to regulate the traffic that enters the circle, and it's something that can be done on a very relatively cheap basis because the lights are there already. All they have to do is be coordinated, and they don't even have to be on 24 hours a day. They can only be, if they decide to do that, do it, regulate the traffic between the peak hours that I just mentioned. And I think it would provide a very safe and viable solution, and I would ask you all to consider this before you make a final decision and wait for PennDOT to come up with an approval. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, on with the other subject, which is, sorry to hold you up, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. Bradley Cooper, Newtown Grant resident, Newtown resident since 1999. It's good that I see a lot of people here for a cause, that they are rallying together for it, but I just want to make it brief to let anybody else who wants to speak, speak. But as we have seen the last, let's say, four or five years, we've had big proposals come to Newtown. The Wawa, which a lot of people, again, didn't like, like myself. We had Toll Brothers across from Newtown Grant, and I'm going to be stuck with having to deal with that some of you don't have to. And people on Twining Bridge Road rallied together and said, "We don't want this." We had people that came here from the development, it's the 15-and-over community right across the street, that said they don't want the daycare center put on Dorm Road, like that gentleman said, because of the traffic and all of the issues and problems that arise. And I mentioned it before, but it seems like, in my opinion, as a resident who comes here pretty frequently, I'm in opposition to certain things because I don't feel that it's necessary or should be there, or that the proposal is correct, even though I don't have a say in it, I try to voice my opposition on it using factual data and information and try to explain why we don't like it. And when these proposals come up, it's not just me and two other people that are complaining about, you got 15, 20, 30, 40 people that complain about them. And it feels like that, no matter how much we complain or yell, it still feels like that there's nothing that's done about it, or nothing that we try to stop about it, or try to make it a situation where the Township residents, if it has to go through because of zoning law approvals or Planning Commission approvals, that we get the residents to be happy with and say, "Hey, here's what we did to make you happy. We did this or that." And then, on the backside, because of us not having the way to get out of it, this is what we did to try to make it where everyone's happy. It doesn't seem like that really happens, and it doesn't seem like that that is what really happens when we look at what gets proposed and what gets approved through the Township. Because every big business or every big, you know, development or proposal got approved and went through. And it doesn't seem like that our zoning laws are up to the 2024, 2025 standards, or that we're prepared for something that we know a year, year and a half is going to be coming towards us, that we could do something about it to maybe put a wrench in it, or to figure out a way that we can make it not happen. So, I hope that you guys, in the new year, look at what's coming up, what's going to happen, what we're going to have be proposed in the Township, and look at it and say, "Okay, well, maybe this isn't good. Let's not have 1,500 restaurants and businesses and government buildings or whatever on the bypass that's supposed to be a greenway," and not turn it into a street road, Warminster, Trevo's, Ben's Sale, because people don't want that. They moved to Newtown because of the cool beauty and the historicness of it, not all the businesses. If we wanted that, I would have went to Ben Salomon Lives. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Donna Cerula, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the countless residents and business owners who are deeply concerned about the proposed sewer plant, right? I live in Newtown in Wilcher Walk on 11th Court. You may remember me from the petition opposing the variance for that Chick-fil-A. It was going to be built off the Newtown bypass, and I was able to gather 1,348 signatures. That effort showed the strength of our community, and we came together to protect what we love about this town. And Newtown is a gem. He just said it, it's quaint, it's beautiful. My God, we watch Hallmark movies, and they want to live in a town like Hallmark, like Newtown, right? And it's a place where families come to put down roots, it's where people want to shop and dine and enjoy life. And the bypass, it's a gateway to our community. And now, of the vision of a 2.5 million gallon per day sewer plant right here, that's not, that's not Newtown. Is it Newtown, guys? This plant threatens to bring odors, smell, increased truck traffic, and serious environmental risks. Ellen, you're an environmentalist. Do you want that there? You sit on the Board. Do you want it there? We are asking for your support in ensuring this project does not move forward. We want to protect the character, the beauty, and the future of Newtown. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Valerie Mahalik, Newtown Walk. Donna, excellent job. I went to the Sewer Authority meeting last week and brought up these questions, and they were not answered. I know they said they would take them under consideration, but I wanted to present it to the Board and all of the people in the room. Number one, how was the land condemned, and who condemned the land? How was the land purchased for $9 million without presenting it to the ratepayers or the Township Board of Supervisors? Additionally, why would you spend $9 million on a piece of property that you weren't even certain was acceptable to the ratepayers, which you all represent? So, remember, you all are up there to represent these people, and even if the majority of these people are Middletown Township, you represent them as well right now, because what is being there directly impacts many of the people who will speak following me. Thank you.
Anybody else from Newtown?
My name is Mark Lebraska. I live 25 Copper Leaf Drive in Newtown Township. And I was summoned to this meeting today by this memo that was left on my mailbox. So, I came today to find out if all this information that's on this memo is true. And it's not dated, it's not signed, it doesn't represent any particular organization. My question was, first of all, does the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors have the authority, yes or no? Either if we, if you say yes, they can, then they will, or if you say no, then they cannot. Are you the end? Does the buck end, end with you, that you're, you know? And then, the other questions I have, you know, about, is it really going to, this treatment plant, we have to start paying higher rates immediately? Instead of a base of $82 a month, it's $124 a month, or 122. But the, it's a 47% increase immediately. Is that 47% increase, who are we subsidizing? Who benefits from this? Certainly, the residents, we don't benefit from, because they're going to raise our rates, and they're going to subject us to potential odors, pollution, additional traffic. So, we don't benefit by it. Who does benefit by it? And then, you know, does the Board of Supervisors have the chance to say yes or no? That's it.
We don't, we don't answer. If you want to submit questions to us in writing, we will definitely give you an answer, but we do not. It's always been like this. We do not have a conversation back and forth. We don't have data to give you, first of all. We don't have what you want. We are not the Sewer Authority, and that's a public utility. We don't have the answers you're looking for as, at this time. Thank you.
If you have a public comment, why don't you come up to the podium and?
Correct. We're not going to respond to a mass of people yelling things at us or even talking things at us. That's just not how this Board works. That's my privilege of the Chair and has nothing to do with anything else. Yes. Does anybody else, anybody? Is there anybody else that wants to make public comment? Thank you.
Madam Chair, while they're coming up, may I just say, we're here to listen. I have not made an opinion on anything. I don't have plans in front of me to make an opinion about. So, this does not have to be adversarial. Please share your feelings. We're going to take note of them, and whenever there is a decision to make, we'll make it based on what we hear tonight. So, don't blow your opportunity by getting, you know, get it all heated. Keep it, keep it calm, and tell us what you think, that's all.
Good afternoon. My name is Virginia Walsh, and although I live at 313 White Swan Way in Swan Point in in Swan Point in Middletown, my business is located on the Menace Trail in Newtown. So I thought, given what we were just talking about, that it would be appropriate for me to speak briefly on some of the information I did try to get. On January 14th, I sent a right-to-know request to Newtown Township. They responded right away and gave me all the information that I needed regarding meeting minutes, exhibits to meeting minutes, and other information regarding water and wastewater treatment information. I sent a right-to-know request to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, and they responded. They denied the request, but advised that the specific information that I was looking for was with the Newtown County Joint Municipal Authority. I also got some information, which I'll discuss after letting you know what happened when I sent the same right-to-know request to Newtown Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority on January 14th. I also have a copy of the right-to-know request if the board would like to see them. There is no right-to-know officer either on the website. And when I contacted the Newtown Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority for the information, I was told that there is no specific right-to-know officer. Agency under the right-to-know law in Pennsylvania, they are legally required to have. When I sent the right-to-know request as a local agency under the law, they are legally required to respond to me within five days. Monday was a holiday, so the technical deadline was yesterday. They missed that deadline. Even if they can't get all the information together, they never even responded, which technically means that in order to appeal, they denied my request. Under the law, they have to respond. They did not. So all of the information that I'm trying to get and I'm trying to get for a number of people here to understand more about how this came about, I have been denied. We have all been denied. We cannot get that information. And that's a violation of the law. At this point, we have no choice but to appeal to Harrisburg and let them know that we are being kept from the information that we want and the answers that we need, that even coming here, as you have stated, you don't have. We need them, and we want to know them, and we have a right to them. It's important to know that none of the 30 exceptions to the right-to-know laws apply. They are legally required to everything I wrote down to provide answers to, and they have not provided even a response to it. That should scare a lot of people. The lack of information, the lack of knowing where money went. Regarding money, the information that I did find out from the right-to-know request for the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, as some may or may not know, there was $60 million bonded in 2023 to, I'm sorry, not repair, replace the lines going to the Nishamani Interceptor. $15 million of that has already been spent. In 2023, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority raised retail rates to ratepayers by 16% in 2023. That covered the entire $60 million bond. That same year, Newtown raised the rates 20%, not 16%, 20%, more than what Bucks County had raised. And in this past January, as someone has already said, they raised it another 47%. There was no increase from Bucks County Sewer and Water. Bucks County Sewer and Water has already, as of that raised rate in 2023, paid for the entire $60 million bond for the replacement to the Nishamani Interceptor. So information that we're getting that this new water sewage plant is absolutely necessary and critical is not correct. The Nishamani Interceptor is already, the lines are already being replaced. It's already being repaired, and Newtown already paid for it. Thank you.
Okay, that's a little hard to follow, but I'll do my best. Okay, Blake Hayman over Oak Ridge Drive Summit Trace, Middletown. There are going to be a lot of, she pretty much said it, I'm not going to repeat anything about the money wise or whatever. We all know that's going to be coming, and that's, you know, with the economy and everything. Everybody has to tighten up. I'm not even going, you know, I'm not going to deny it. I pay my sewer to Bucks County Water and Sewer. There has been a definite increase, and my water goes to Newtown Artesian. What I'm getting at is, many moons ago, and I've been in Bucks County all of my life. I remember when 413 was, you were lucky if you saw two cars going up to New Hope back in the late 60s, early 70s. I was a resident and taxidermist of Newtown Township. That was when I say all the bulldozers were going nuts back in the late 80s with all the growth that we have seen, and we've seen a lot more growth since then. I worked over 30-plus years in Newtown Township, Newtown Borough. So I've seen a lot of growth, you know, going on. And what I'm getting at is the ramifications and the environmental issues that are going to be going into Middletown Township. You are going to be, it's going to be probably drilling. I'm not an expert, I'm just taking guesses. It's probably going to be going to Lake Luxembourg, then Nishamani Creek, okay? Right over there, that's just a stone's throw away from Middletown. I apologize, I did not get to the Middletown Township meeting. I would have loved to go there. But let's go back a little bit in time. How much money did Newtown Township spend trying to defend a car dealer from not going on that side? And how much money did Newtown Township pay fighting Wawa and them going in? So it's just that there's going to be a lot of other environmental issues. You know, I apologize, I'm a little bit, you know, nervous or whatever. I apologize for that. Thing is, there's a lot of other issues that are going down, and the lines do not stop at a township line. There's going to be, I'm on the outer ring of where this odor is. How come they have not looked at restoring that plant over by Crown Point that was active back in the late 80s? And then Newtown Township moratorium on building because that system was out of date back in the 80s, and then they went to, Newtown went to the other provider. So it's, you know, those are some questions that need to be addressed. You know, people buy property, they have the right to develop it as an easy fit, as long as it's within the law. But the thing is, something like this. And the regs with the environmental, the EPA and stuff, and they're always changing, where if you have a bigger government agency, they can maybe afford the changes a lot more than saddling the local people with the rate increase of how much more? You know, $120 or whatever may not be a lot to some people. But I'm retired, I'm on a limited income. So it's just driving a lot of people away who might be moving somewhere else. And, you know, it's a shame. It makes you cry when you see a lot of the development that has been going on within the Bucks County area. Thank you.
How you guys doing? Now you're becoming a frequent speaker on the circuit. My name is Dave Hartezki. I live at Stonebridge Court in Middletown. Again, thank you for the opportunity to kind of speak my mind. I kind of wanted to take a little bit more professional approach to this while I know there's a lot of people that are going to be talking DEP, EPA, CFO kind of stuff up here. But briefly for me, I grew up in Ben's Ale, and the real Bradley Cooper said it right. Street Road is a nightmare in Ben's Ale. I graduated in 95, go Owls. I couldn't wait to get out of there because of what it turned into. It was just an extension of Northeast Philly. And I would love to keep what I moved here for intact, for sure. But when we got up here, I got myself a nice house, and apparently I don't want to move out of this house because my wife and I keep having kids. My youngest just celebrated her fourth birthday, and I'm 47 years old, so I'm not going anywhere anytime soon, unless I wake up and go out back and smell the smell of other people's waste. And when we're driving in the car, my old man used to live down the shore. We would drive on 29 past, it used to be Arm &amp; Hammer Baseball Stadium. It's now Trenton Thunder Stadium. And it stinks. Every once in a while, it'll stink. You're doing 50 miles an hour, it stinks for two minutes. So you're looking at probably about a two mile that it stinks. And we always joke around, oh, you farted, you farted. You know, it's the thing that we would do, and it's a joke. Because it's a joke that we drive through at 50 miles an hour. The thought of walking out back of my house when we have my kid's birthday party scheduled, and I got to worry about the temperature and the direction of the wind because there are these proposed increases in the cost of what may happen with Bucks County Sewer and Water Authority. And being told by the woman that spoke at the Board of Supervisors meeting at Middletown in December, where they visited that place that one time in Kansas in October and said you couldn't smell it outside of the door. I have been talking to everybody that'll listen, and I have heard people telling me that they had an uncle that lived next to one, they had an aunt that lived next to one, their neighbor moved away from one, and there's always a smell. So it's not, if it's going to smell, how bad, how far, and when? That's going to happen. So, and my real concern is, once this ball gets rolling and we go past the point of no return, we got $130 million facilities up there, and we realize that stench is there, the one that we were told wouldn't be there, what are we going to do? We're going to put boards on the doors and say, ah, well, you know, we didn't think it was going to happen? No. There's nothing that's going to be able to be done, and there's no rewinding that. So I do make an offer to the board. It's not a bribe. It is an offer to fund a fact-finding mission. I will be more than happy to cover all expenses, travel, and room to go visit one of these facilities, the same one that they're planning on building in Newtown. I believe there's seven of them in the country. Whichever one you want to, if there's one near Orlando, I'll take you to that one. But we'll go down there in the summertime when we anticipate the smell will be there. And I'd like for you guys to smell that yourselves and imagine that's the smell you're going to reach when you're going to your nephew's birthday party, your grandkid's birthday party, or you're just going out to get the paper. So that's it. Thanks for listening.
Can I just mention, there's one in Hawaii?
Good evening. Thank you very much for entertaining us tonight. My name is Melissa Murray-Rigney. I live at 423 White Swan Way in Middletown Township. I just moved to that house because I used to live at another house in the neighborhood, and I loved that neighborhood so much, I bought another house there. But just prior to moving to Middletown, I lived in Bristol Township, .9 miles from the existing wastewater treatment facility in Bristol. It's terrible. There is not a if it will smell. It will smell. It is awful. It doesn't matter if it's summer or winter. It doesn't matter if it's dry or if it rains. I had to move because I could no longer stand going outside in my backyard to get in my pool. My kids didn't want to have their friends over. It's awful. I was constantly sick. My asthma was atrocious. I had horrible IBS. All of my kids were sick all of the time. If you look on the web, and it doesn't take a whole lot of digging, you will see that there are definitive health effects, negative health effects from living near one of these things. And, you know, the engineer from Janet Fleming, who works for the authority, she did the best that she could do, and she's right. She went to a brand-new facility in Kansas. I think it was reported that there were less than 700 residents within like a several-mile radius. I'm sure if we went back and looked at the minutes, we would be able to tell. That is a vast difference from what we have. And I understand that there's a lot, there are a lot of Newtown residents who maybe won't be affected by the proximity of this facility. We will be. The Newtown residents at Wiltshire Walk, everybody who goes to the NAC, forget sitting outside at the Oasis. You might as well stop paying that fee now. It's horrendous. Answer to the question of, there was a Newtown resident who spoke and said, why aren't they looking at the previous facility that they realized would cost too much to upgrade, and they abandoned it and then joined with the rest of us in the regional system? And the reason for that is, the zoning ordinance in Newtown Township no longer would permit that as a viable location. The reason why that property was chosen is because it is over 17 acres. The zoning ordinance, your zoning ordinance, states that in order to put a wastewater treatment facility in that zoning district, it can only occupy 10%. This is a one-and-a-half acre and some change proposed facility. That's why they like that, because it's the right size. Oh, and also, it's as far away from the bulk of their ratepayers as possible. How, how is Lake Luxembourg going to be able to take on 250 million gallons of effluent a day? How? Where does it go? Not only, not only are you talking about the smell because it will smell, and I know that they're going to say it doesn't, but it does. I will tell you that there are negative health effects because when I moved to Middletown Township, my asthma alba disappeared, and I stopped being sick all the time. And my kids stopped missing school because they didn't have bronchitis every third week. There will be a negative economic impact, I'm sorry, a negative economic impact to all of us in the regional system because, you know, we talked about it before, there's a whole pie, and if there are three pieces of pie or three people taking from that pie, those pie slices are the same. But when you remove someone eating that pie, the rest of us eat a much larger portion. Rates will go up for everyone else because, in Newtown, because it's going to cost a lot of money to build, a lot more than the $9 million that they spent on buying this property. It was sneaky. And it's a horrible idea for this neighborhood. Thank you.
I would just ask, we want to hear from everybody, if everybody could keep their, so we can get out of here at a reasonable time. If you could keep it to like two or three minutes, we would appreciate it.
I will try my best to do that. Introduce myself, my name is Ryan Layton. I'm a lifelong resident of Middletown Township. I live in the Cobalt Ridge section, which is actually on the farther end of the township than a lot of my neighbors here who are from Swan Point. But I'm still here to advocate on their behalf because I know they would do the same if Bristol was going to build a sewer plant right across the street from my house. They wouldn't want my family to deal with that either. I have lived my whole life in Middletown, like I said. Core Creek Park is a place that I have cherished. It's a place that makes Middletown special. As Newtown has a lot of great parks too, I frequent it. I've taken girls on dates to these parks. I spend time with my friends there. But if there is a sewer treatment plant, I will probably never go there again because, you know, no one wants to go on a date with someone where they're reminded of the smell of sewage every time they eat them, right? So I think that it's, it was surprising to me because I go to many, if not most, of the Middletown Supervisor meetings. I was not informed about this plant until, I believe it was two meetings ago. I believe it was you that brought it up, and I first heard about it, which was shocking because the land was already purchased and things were already under their way. The engineer was there and a lawyer was there to explain to us why this was going to happen. And first, I want to thank my neighbors for, you know, organizing so quickly and for becoming successful amateur clothing designers so quickly. I just, I feel very blindsided by this because I've spent a lot of time in Newtown as well. I go to doctor's appointments here. I frequent restaurants, movie theaters, bars, parks with my friends and my family. I always see Newtown as kind of like, you know, as our neighbor in Middletown. This doesn't feel very neighborly, to sneak this in and put a sewage plant next to a neighbor where people worked very hard to buy those houses. A lot of people tonight talked about moving from other townships into Middletown. My family as well was not from Middletown. My family as well was not from Middletown originally. They, they worked hard and moved their way in. People worked hard for their money to buy these properties, they pay their taxes. No one wants their quality of life to be sacrificed so that I guess Newtown can save a little bit of money on sewage, if that's even what's going to happen. And what I heard from some other residents here, it sounded like there's a bit of an accountability issue with the board. Now, look, I work for an elected official. I understand governing is not easy. I understand the public doesn't always get the governing process and sometimes that can be frustrating. It's, what I do every day is try to help people explain, can't always have it the way we want, we try to do the best we can. But I'll say, in my time working with elected officials in most levels of government, never have I seen a project this large or this impactful snuck under its own residents' noses or its neighbors. I think it's, it's kind of disgraceful and I think that there should be way more transparency with this process. Thank you.
Gary Sundermeyer, six two two White Swan Way in the Swan Point Development Forty Year Residence. Many of us here tonight are afraid and we're afraid because we don't know what a sewer plant is going to do to our quality of life, to our property value, to our really treasured local environment. And we really weren't, we were here first. And as Donna Sodula said earlier, we came here because we love this area and we don't live political subdivisions, whether it's Newtown Township or Borough or Middletown or Lower Bigfield or Yardley, this is our home and we're going to protect our home. There is no way that a sewer plant is going to be put in our backyard without us putting together as organized and as substantive an opposition as we possibly can. And this concept, this, this concept of the Sewer Authority getting back in the game and, and having their own facility again, obviously is not new. You know this, going back to two thirteen, it was attempted then. Our neighbors from Crown Point stood up and they said, no. And we're here tonight all to say, no. As in two thirteen, you can say no. And we've heard you say that this is not your project, it's a Sewers Authority project. We understand what that means. We understand that it's a quasi judicial, independent Sewer Authority to deal with the wastewater for the township borough. But the fact is that your predecessors created this board and it was a long time ago. It was sixty-four years ago in nineteen sixty-one, but you and the borough created the board and as the duly elected officials of Newtown Township, you inherit that creation and some of that responsibility. And as you know, you even aim to be the board members to the Sewer Authority. So you are clearly, clearly, directly involved in this. And we as citizens, obviously have a voice, as a number of people have said already, it's astonishing how this thing came about. We only found out about it a short time ago as well. But obviously we put together a really strong opposition movement in a very short period of time. And we do want to impress upon you tonight respectfully, but emphatically that this is just the beginning. We are not going to go away. Tonight, my friends and neighbors and colleagues who are here, we've all worked very hard together. We're going to make a number of quick presentations, the chair, we're going to try to go, as we can, we understand what you said, try to be respectful of that. We're going to outline how you can stop this project through the Act five thirty-seven Water Quality Management Planning Process, which was used before. We're going to talk about that in more detail. The twenty twenty plan that was adopted is very, very clear that the preferred alternative was to stay within the regional system of Bucks County Water and Sewer is the right thing to do. We plan to show how poor the public process really has been. I mean, it's been amazing, the gentleman who just spoke, it's true, like where did this even come from? A colleague and I showed up last week at the Township and the Borough Environmental Advisory Council meetings and we informed, we informed the members of the two EACs about this project. They had no idea. I was in Newtown Borough, they were stunned. Like, how could this happen? We're the duly appointed environmental advisory council for this town and we didn't know anything about this. We're going to talk more about that. We're going to talk about and, and provide information technically about how the sewer plant will stink and it will stink. It's a matter of how often, how badly, and how dispersed the stink ring goes. We're going to outline unacceptable water quality impacts to the Shammany Creek, Core Creek, Lake Luxembourg, and ultimately a cool of Bucks County, which is Core Creek Park. It's precious to our environment, right? We're going to talk about future costs that have not at all been considered by the Sewer Authority, which pertain to evolving environmental issues like forever chemicals and PFOS and microplastics filtration. And finally, we plan to show that the project economics do not work either in the short term or the long term. And we feel very strongly, that's the whole purpose, you're supposed to build this plant and the economics don't work. They do not work. So in closing, the project is simply not needed. What the township and the borough should do is stay within the regional system. That is absolute public policy for wastewater treatment in the United States of America. Coming out as a small plant is virtually unheard of and it shouldn't be done. And finally, we have heard that the Sewer Authority has said that they have fiduciary responsibility to protect the ratepayers of the township in the borough. I think every single person here tonight and every single person watching on at home have a far greater fiduciary responsibility to protect our families, our property value, our precious local environment, and this place that we love, which we call home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening. My name is Bill Everett and I am a resident of Swan Point Development in Middletown Township adjacent to Woodburn Road and three, Route three thirty-two. I live in the north part of Swan Point, literally a couple hundred yards from the border of Newtown Township. Lower Silver Lake Road is right next to Swan Point. I live right down the road from the proposed sewer plant site. At the November twenty-fourth and the December eleventh Newtown Board of Supervisors meetings, I voiced my environmental and financial concerns about this terrible sewage wastewater project. My topic this evening is a document the Sewer Authority must update to get approved early in their process. That document is the Act five thirty-seven Plan. The act is called the Pennsylvania Sewer Facilities Act created in nineteen sixty-six to ensure proper planning of sewer systems. The current version is over four hundred pages long and details the entire sewage environment for Newtown Township. Every township has an Act five thirty-seven Plan and updates their version when there are changes to the sewer environment in their township. The current Newtown Township Act five thirty-seven Plan is based on the regional system strategy implemented across the state as recommended by the PA Department of Environmental Protection. There was a detailed analysis made during the last significant update in twenty twenty that recommended to the PA Department of, of, of Environmental Protection that they continue to operate aligned with the original strategy with the wastewater taken down via the current infrastructure to Philadelphia, bypassing Core Creek, the Shammany Creek, and other environmentally sensitive areas for final processing and not to Core Creek, to Lake Luxembourg, destroying Core Creek Park as this project proposes. That recommendation was approved by the PA Department of Environmental Protection. The regional strategy spreads costs among other participants in the region and is inherently more cost efficient than a standalone plant. So let's review. The Act five thirty-seven planning process evaluated all options, including building a standalone sewer plant. They chose to upgrade into Shammany Interceptor remaining in the regional strategy. The PA Department of Environmental Protection agreed and approved the plan. Bucks County Water and Sewer proceeded to fund the Shammany Interceptor update and have begun work. So what are they trying to fix? Something doesn't smell right here. Pun intended. So thank you for your time this evening and remember, you are not required to proceed with this terrible project. Thank you.
My name is Peter Jordan, Swan Point representative. Unfortunately, I'm an engineer, so good luck trying to keep me brief. I had wonderful lead-ins from both Gary and I didn't get your name talking about odors. I'm your stink man. May I hand these out? We formed a Technoco Committee. Our team has over three hundred years of practical experience in toxicology, engineering, wastewater, and water treatment. Personally, I've done what's known as dispersion analysis several hundred times. I've been hired by the Department of Defense, for example, to conduct these analyses for the Army Corps of Engineer and I've been hired as an expert witness on these subjects four separate times. What we did was we quantitatively evaluated, what is the smell? How much can go out? How far can it go? And how often does it occur? What we did was we did an extensive literature source, everything we could find in the United States, Western Europe, China, you name it, we looked at it. We went through every sewer plant in Bucks County and in Burlington County and found out what violations they had. When were they releasing it? When were they discharging it improperly? When were they not operating their equipment properly? How often does that occur? We talked with years, with people with hundreds of years cumulative experience in water treatment, what can go wrong? With that background, let me show you the conclusions. It's on the map in front of you. Those out there, the posters you got, someone asked, is it accurate? Is it technically accurate? Here's the technically accurate version. We'll send this out as soon as possible. There are two rings on this. There's an inner ring that goes three tenths of a mile. That three tenths of a mile means every day you could get stink within that ring. What is within three tenths of a mile? Oh, nothing important, just springtime school, a school for autistic children, three common, three business areas, Spring Lake Campus, Newtown Tech, church, not a problem. It's only three tenths of a mile, that's what's inside of it. Now, I am not here to say that everyone within that circle, every day will smell it. That's not accurate. I have no doubts that when you go to a treatment plant at certain times of the day and periods, you smell nothing. That's perfectly logical and perfectly explainable. There was a wonderful technical paper that I found in my research that said it perfectly. On average, you will not smell the stink, but nothing works perfectly the whole time. There are always going to be peaks and valleys, there's always going to be upsets. So on any given day, anyone within that three tenths of a mile can smell it. And by the way, what is that smell? That smell is hydrogen sulfide. There are many things are admitted, so yes, there can be health benefits, but the most, what really stinks is hydrogen sulfide. How much does it stink? It has an odor threshold less than one particle per billion. That's why you smell it. So there's two reasons you might be standing right over the pit and might not smell it. Maybe it's the wrong time of year. As I've pointed out earlier, during the summer, it stinks a whole lot worse than it does in winter. So if you go to a nice crisp October day, you're not going to smell it. There's another reason, and I've seen this hundreds of times, hydrogen sulfide is a dense gas. Let me explain. By definition, with its chemical formula, it is heavier than air, which means when you release it to the atmosphere, initially it's going to go right up and you could be standing right at the pond and smell nothing. But the problem when you release something heavier than air is it goes up and what goes up must come down. So you might not smell it right there, but that core school with the autistic children three tenths of a mile, they will smell it. Countless times in business, I've heard stories where they don't smell it at the plant, but the neighborhood smells it. That's three tenths of a mile. Now, your outer ring, which is really half of Newtown and half of Middletown and a little bit of our neighboring township, just, just to add some flavor, that's one point seven miles. Means that on occasion, you will get a one point seven miles. At the outside of the ring, it'll be about less than a particle a million and the concentration goes in as it goes further. How do you get that ring? Any sort of upset at the plant. By upset, I mean a change in flow, change in what's, or an operational problem and a mechanical problem. Please don't tell me that they're going to operate it perfectly and never have these problems, doesn't work that way. I've looked at the data. Ms. Funk talked about a plant that she drove past every day of her life in Horsum. I'm sorry, but that's a bad example for you for the plant. Of all the plants I looked at in Bucks and Burlington County, that had more fines, more violations, more problems than any other plant in either county. Not a good example to say that one doesn't smell. So one point happens, it's impossible for me to know exactly how often, I'm not that good. But basically, based on everything I'm reading, everything I've seen, our data, at least once every other month, maybe less frequently or, you're going to get one point seven miles. That's the nature of it. Now bear in mind, we're hearing two point five million gallons. I'm not naive enough to believe that there's not thoughts of increasing the capacity to make it economical to take in your neighbor's sewer. This is proportional, these circles, roughly speaking, to how much you send in. If you double the capacity of the plant and go from two point five to five, that one point seven miles goes to two point nine million miles. I was generous enough on this thing to say it doesn't include St. Mary Medical Center. Good luck with that and everything else. So in conclusion, this is the technical data on how much.
My name is Ray Post. I've been a resident of Bucks County now for thirty-five years. I spend much of my leisure time enjoying the county and state parks, which make this community of ours really such a great place to live. I'm often spend, found kayaking in Lake Luxembourg, as well as Galena and Nakamix and Delaware River. I hike along the Shammany at Tyler, often with my granddaughter, walking around playing at Core Creek Park. So these are our communities' cherished, shared resources that I asked you tonight to respect and also to protect. Many of you may know that most, if not many, if not most, lakes and streams suffer a slow death by the accumulation of algae mats and weeds. This is a process called eutrophication. It's driven by nutrients that enter the water column as well as a little bit of silt. Lake Luxembourg has for many, many years been considered by the environmental officials to be impaired with respect to having too much phosphorus as well as too much suspended solids. This problem has been addressed by literally decades-long program by the Bucks County Conservation District in conjunction with Princeton Hydro, one of the premier rehabilitation firms, at least on the East Coast. A couple of years ago, I attended a joint presentation of the County Conservation District and Princeton Hydro and they outlined at least thirty projects to, to improve this impaired condition, reduce the amount of phosphorus and nutrients entering the system. These included approved catch basins in many of our communities, probably Newtown as well, certainly Middletown, and as well as stream bank stabilization, vegetative buffers, and of course, the biggie, as you probably know, we partially drained Lake Luxembourg and we dredged out the northern part of that lake, the so-called conservation part, and we replanted that with special vegetation designed to trap suspended solids and silt coming in there as well as metabolize and eliminate much of the phosphorus and nitrogen that was entering that, the lake and that, the northern end there. As a result of all of those, you know, decades of effort, and there's more effort continuing, and what's been estimated as being approximately two million been estimated as being approximately $2 million worth of taxpayer money, grants, the results of that effort, which is still ongoing, has been to reduce the amount of phosphorus entering that lake by almost 2,000 pounds. Reduced by almost 2,000 pounds, which is really significant. 2,000 pounds per year, I should say. Reduced by 2,000 pounds per year. So, now speaking to you as a professional engineer with 39 years of experience in water treatment, what exactly might we anticipate from a 2.5 million gallon wastewater treatment plant discharging its effluent almost directly into this lake that we've been working so hard to rehabilitate? Well, let me tell you on the back of an envelope what that looks like. Let's take 2.5 million gallons. We know a gallon weighs a little more than eight pounds, right? 2.5 times eight, that's 20 million pounds of water effluent per day entering that lake. Say there's 350 days in a year, and so we're going to call 20 times 350, 7,000 million pounds per year of effluent entering the lake. Simple enough? So, now, most of us know commonly that wastewater sewage contains a lot of phosphorus and nitrogen. We use it for fertilizer. So, these wastewater treatment plants do a really good job of removing most of that phosphorus and nitrogen, but still quite a bit gets through. How much might get through? Well, this preliminary design document for the Walcott plant, which has been used, you know, as the discussion, the aquanorade or whatever, indicated that under their basic nutrient removal program, we would have one part per million of phosphorus in the effluent. So, one part per million times 7,000 is 7,000 pounds per year of phosphorus that we can expect to enter that lake. Now, we've always spent a couple of decades and a couple million bucks of taxpayer money involved several organizations, professional groups, to take out almost 2,000 pounds. So now, we're going to add 7,000 pounds. We're going to erase all of that effort, times three. That's not very good. Now, one of us checked recently with the Walcott plant, and they're not actually meeting their 1 ppm. They're running about 1.3, so it's a little higher, but let's keep the numbers simple and say 1. Now, a sewage treatment plant with all the bells and whistles and everything on it, we'd be talking another digester stage, two stages of methanol injection, alum addition, autochemistry being added here, tertiary filtration, you should be able to get under 1 ppm. Design documents suggest maybe .3, but that would be hard to do. But even if it was what they call the limit of technology, that would still be .3 parts per million times 7,000 pounds. You're still erasing, putting 2,000 pounds of phosphorus in there per year. That's completely destroying everything that we've been, that's been trying to accomplish there. But there's more. You know, nitrogen. We know that wastewater sewage contains nitrogen. We use it as a fertilizer. What might we expect from nitrogen loadings to be? Well, you can check the preliminary design documents, and you'll see that they're exactly 10 times the phosphorus. So, go ahead and do the numbers. 7,000 million pounds a year times 10 parts per million of nitrogen, that's 70,000 pounds per year of nitrogen that you're adding to the plant. Let me put that in context. You go to the fertilizer store, you buy a big 40-pound bag of fertilizer, 20% nitrogen. 40 times 20%, that's eight pounds of phosphorus in that bag. You're talking 70,000 pounds per year of nitrogen in that bag. You're talking 70,000 pounds of nitrogen per year. That's 9,000 40-pound bags of phosphorus that you're going to be adding to that lake. Do you think that might have some kind of environmental impact? It's not. These are, these are real numbers. And again, you know, there are the limit of technology. The limit of technology typically for the sewage treatment plant, and also noted in their design document, is about three. So maybe now it's only 2,500, 3,000 pound bags of phosphorus per year that you're adding to that lake? That's an awful lot. So there's a number of other pollutants that you would expect from sewage treatment plant effluent, including pharmaceuticals, trace amounts pharmaceuticals, estrogenic compounds or gender benders, perfluorinated compounds that aren't easily removed, microplastics. With Ellen, you've done a lot to reduce plastics with the plastic ordinance. There's a lot of things that, many things and many more that we don't know of, but let's skip right to the biggie, okay? When you're talking about sewage, usually the first things to come to mind are fecal coliforms, right? This is pretty dirty and nothing that you want to be touching. The sewage treatment plants do a pretty decent job of removing that. The federal environmental protection would like you to get down to 126 colony-forming units per 100 ml in a recreational water, although the states have some flexibility as to how they want to interpret that and other, other classes of water. For instance, the design document for the aquanorade facility at Walcott, in the summer months, instead of 126, they're a little over 400 in their design document. In the wintertime, almost 4,000. But, not boring you with numbers, I think they could do better, by the way, if they, if they went more than just the ultraviolet light station, I think they could do better. But just cut to the point here. We're talking about fecal coliforms. In the sewage effluent from that plant, no matter what. That's a recreational facility that's used by a lot of people. And during the summer months, nearly 100% of the flow into that lake is going to be effluent from this treatment plant, and a lot of that will go down the spillway on the back end and down into the Shaminie Creek, not much further. So, just think of the aesthetics here. Would you like to be paddle boarding or kayaking in sewage treatment plant effluent? Come on, you don't want that for our community. And so, you know, this is my, my plea to you. I understand that potentially, there might be some savings in terms of the sewer bill. There might also be, you know, a significant increase, depending on who the numbers you believe. But the one thing you can count on is that our environment and our cherished resources and quality of life will take a big hit if this treatment plant is ever built. So, I thank you very much for your time. I hope I've tried to be as concise as possible, and I, I thank you all very sincerely for all you do for this community.
Excuse me for one minute. We have an agenda that I just want to quickly go through so we can finally get to the rest of your comments without any delay or interruption. So, we do have an agenda. It's very quick. We would like to finish before you guys continue to voice your concerns, which we want to Okay, we're going to, as I said, move on to parts of the agenda here, and then you can speak again.[1125.88][1125.88](APPLAUSE). Yes, there's a second round of public comment at the end of the agenda, so just bear with us for a minute. So, we're down to a report of board members. I'll start with my report. We are starting to use battery, well, we're trying battery-powered equipment for use in our parks to see if they are worth buying. We're comparing that to gas-powered equipment to see what the time duration and what the necessary power needed is. If one is better than the other, we plan to, of course, in the future, go completely to battery-powered equipment. We want to get rid of gasoline-powered equipment. I'm sure you're glad to hear that, because this is all environmental as well. So that's an update from me. Mr. Vice Chair, any?
Two things real quick. I want to thank Public Works for their clearing the streets during the snowstorm Sunday night and Monday. And I'd like to recognize that our firefighters had a quick response on Columbine, Columbine Court. I'm not sure what, it's a place or a court or a drive, but Columbine, they knocked, knocked a residential fire out. It was confined to the garage, and it did not spread to the house. So I want to recognize them. That's all I have.
Mr. Secretary-Treasurer.
In the interest of getting to the second round of public comment quicker, I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Mr. Colabra.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, which is something a little bit different than we normally do. Instead of saying the bill's list and the minutes, we're going to just ask for a vote, assuming that every supervisor has had a chance to look in their packet for the details and mention anything that they might see out of the ordinary. So, if that's good, may I have a motion to consider the approval of minutes, payment of bills, and financial security releases?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
I do have one comment. The, I believe the minutes for the second meeting on, the regular meeting on January 6th, it had that I was the chair, and, yeah, please make that change. So, the meeting was called to order by the new chair, Ms. Snyder.
Anybody else?
I'll just disappoint you. I can't read the bill's list anymore. Sorry.[1323.11][1323.11](LAUGHTER).
Okay. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of passing our consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4 to 0. Moving on to reports of officials. Engineers report.
Our only item tonight was under the consent agenda. That's all I have to report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
See, now you know. Okay. Anybody have any questions? No. Okay. Onto the solicitors' report.
Again, Madam Chair, no report this evening. Open to questions from the board.
Any questions?
I would, I would mention, thanks for your help in determining what's a quorum for the Human Relations Commission. They wanted to know if they could have somebody call in, and the decision was, as long as they have a quorum present, somebody can call in and their vote would count. And by the way, if there's anybody who lives or works in Newtown that would like to be involved in the Human Relations Commission, which hears cases of discrimination in employment and housing, there's one opening available.
Thank you. General fund balance this evening is $5,533,291. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. Unfortunately, Chief Forsyth is unavailable to attend this evening's meeting, but the monthly ESD report is in the board's packet for review. Final thing I have under my report, Madam Chair, is consider authorization of the chair to sign the Step 4 grievance response to the PBA grievance that was advanced from Step 3 to Step 4. Labor attorney drafted the letter, so a motion to that effect would be appropriate.
I have such a motion.
Someone?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
This is something, I guess, was in our packet, and I haven't had, had a chance to read it. It has to do with employees, correct?
That's correct. It's a matter of personnel.
Why didn't we ever have an executive session to discuss this?
One was never asked for. This was distributed to the board and asked if there were any questions, and we got no response.
Okay, well, you know, I, I'm not in a position to have any vote on this without some further discussion, so I guess, can I abstain? Is that permissible?
You certainly can abstain at your discretion.
All right, thank you.
May I ask that, seeing we have sort of a new format, if you could go through your packet when you get it, and you'll be...
Well, we all have life to live, and I can't read all this stuff.
Yes, yes.
I like to ask questions, and I know sometimes this is a matter of employment that is not public information, that we should consider an executive session whereby I can ask the proper questions.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none, having had a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. So, three yeses and one abstention.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all we have under our report.
Which brings us back to public comment, and now you are free to proceed. And thank you for your patience to let us get done a little bit of business.
My name is Gloria Post, and I've lived in, in Lakeview Estates in Middletown for 35 years. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm going to talk about the expected costs of future regulation of PFAS, which are man-made chemicals that contain carbon and fluorine atoms, and they're often called forever chemicals. These costs were not considered in predicting the cost of the proposed sewer plant. First, for my background, I'm a board-certified PhD toxicologist, and I recently retired after almost 39 years as a research scientist at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, New Jersey DEP. I worked on emerging environmental contaminants, and PFAS was my main focus for the past 20 years. I'm the author of 10 scientific papers about PFAS, and one of them is a review that unbelievably has been cited more than 8, 700 times in other scientific publications. I also served on several national and international PFAS advisory groups included, including for the United States Environmental Protection Agency, US EPA, and I'm currently on the World Health Organization's advisory group for PFAS. So, when New Jersey DEP first found out about PFAS contamination in New Jersey in 2004, PFAS were not widely known or recognized as a problem. They were on the radar screen of only two other states. We had a lot of experience in New Jersey with emerging contaminants and a lot of scientific expertise, and we soon realized that these stood out from all of the other many types of contaminants we dealt with before, and that they pose health effects at very low exposure levels. So, fast forward to now, PFAS has become a huge issue in the United States and all around the world. It's constantly in the news, and it's one of the biggest environmental health problems ever. It was even the subject of a Hollywood movie starring Mark Ruffalo, Dark Waters, which I recommend if you haven't seen it. It's a very good movie. But, Pennsylvania and many other states as well, and the federal government have been, have been aggressive in setting new regulations for PFAS specifically in drinking water. And right now, regulation of PFAS at sewage treatment plants is one of the most important issues about PFAS. I wanted to make, I wanted to make sure everyone here knows that PFAS are a special concern in, in the area of the proposed sewer plant, because PFAS levels are exceptionally high in the water and in the fish there. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection... The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, Pennsylvania DEP, and the United States Geological Survey did a study of PFAS in river streams and lakes throughout all of Pennsylvania. And out of all the 178 locations tested all over the state, the sample from the Shammany Creek in Langhorne had the highest PFAS levels by far of any of the samples. PFAS are also very high in the fish in this area, and Pennsylvania DEP has issued a do-not-eat advisory for all fish caught in the Shammany Creek Basin, including the Shammany Creek, Core Creek, and Lake Luxembourg because of the high levels in the fish. So, there are many reasons why PFAS are such a huge public health concern, so I want to make sure you understand why such a big deal is being made out of these chemicals. First of all, they're incredibly stable. They never break down in the environment. That's why they're called forever chemicals. They're detected in almost everyone's blood. They build up in people's bodies over time, and if exposure ends, it takes many years for them to leave the body. There have been more than 1,000 published studies of the health effects of PFAS, and these studies show health risks from even very low PFAS exposure levels. Some of the health effects are decreased response to vaccines, increased cholesterol levels in blood, decreased birth weight in infants, and harmful effects to the liver. Also, US EPA has determined that the two most common types of PFAS increase the risk of certain types of cancer. And, very disturbingly, at least to me, PFAS buildup in breast milk and breast-fed infants have much higher blood levels than their mothers. This is a big concern because infants and young children are especially sensitive to the effects of PFAS. So, the relevant issue for us here tonight is that PFAS are in the wastewater received by sewage treatment plants. The PFAS are in the wastewater that comes from homes, not just in industrial wastewater. Residential sources include PFAS in consumer products that go down the drain or are excreted in human waste. Also laundering of fabrics coated with PFAS among other sources. But traditional wastewater treatment does not remove PFAS, and the treatment to remove them is very expensive. So the PFAS remain in the treated wastewater that's released as effluent, and they're also in the solid sludge called biosolids that are taken away for disposal. Biosolids are spread on farmland as fertilizer or put in landfills or incinerated, burned. And PFAS are released into the environment from all of these disposal methods. We now know that there are unacceptable health risks from even very low levels of PFAS in water bodies and biosolids. Specifically, last month in December, US EPA published proposed concentrations for PFAS in lakes, streams, and water that will protect for health risks from drinking the water or eating the fish from the water body. These proposed levels are incredibly low. They're in the parts per quadrillion range. That's really unheard of, very low. One final, these very strict water concentrations will be used nationally to determine PFAS effluent limits for sewage treatment plants. Also, a few weeks ago, US EPA published a draft evaluation of the health risks of PFAS in biosolids or sludge. US EPA determined that the health risks are unacceptable, even when the PFAS concentration is lower than what is found in almost all residential and industrial biosolids in the U.S. These health risks of biosolids occur because the PFAS in biosolids is disposed by using as fertilizer, and this, when it's on the agricultural land, it contaminates the food that's grown on this farmland. Also PFAS from the farmland and also PFAS put in landfills can, in the biosolids, can contaminate drinking water. And when biosolids are incinerated or burned, the PFAS released to air may create unacceptable health risks. In the future, it will be more expensive to dispose of biosolids in a way that reduces these health risks. Some states are already regulating PFAS in biosolids and/or in wastewater, and other states are currently working on setting such regulations. For example, New Jersey plans to propose very strict water quality standards for PFAS very soon. So it's likely that PFAS at sewage treatment plants will also be regulated in Pennsylvania in the not-too-distant future, and the relative costs of these new regulations will be much higher for small, local sewer plants like the one proposed in Newtown then for larger regional facilities. Last thing, and I do not have time to go into detail, as mentioned by Gary Sondermeyer, microplastics are another important emerging contaminant that have highly concerning environmental risks and human health risks. And similar as for PFAS, microplastics are present in wastewater effluent and biosolids, and costly regulations at sewer plants are likely on the horizon for them as well. So to sum up, future regulation of these emerging contaminants at sewage treatment plants is likely. These regulations will be expensive, and the costs will be much higher for smaller facilities. These expected costs have not been considered so far, and they should be considered when developing cost estimates for the proposed Newtown Treatment Plant. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and I hope my information's helpful. Thank you.
I don't know, that's kind of scary. Sounds like quite a liability. So, thank you, Ms. Snyder and the other supervisors for your indulgence. I know it's been a long night. We've done this before. It's a long night for us too, but...
I'm sorry, can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just about to do that. My name is Donna Salvucci. I'm Bucks County Middletown resident at Swamp. I'm part of the Opposition Coalition, I could say, the group that's really done a lot of outreach to try to organize. What we're trying to do is a very objective, as much an emotional approach to sharing information and obtaining information. My purpose tonight is to be here and to share what we've experienced as the process of gathering information and trying to obtain information as we've learned about this plan and experienced our relationship with the Sewer Authority. I'm going to try to water down my speech a little bit, only because I know there's a time issue, but we've all shared our pleasure about being part of a shared community. Newtown, I think Lower Makefield probably is represented, that Barrow, the township in Middletown. We have a lot invested in our lives here, and we're asking you to please consider maintaining the quality of our life here by thinking about the science that you've listened to is amazing. It is scary. I'm a severe asthmatic. I do not want to have to deal with what we've heard about tonight. Anyway, so the process that we've experienced as a group, the coalition of scientists and legal representatives and our outreach, is really important, I think, to share. The Sewer Authority is a government entity, right? Do we agree that it's a government entity, right?
It's a public entity.
Okay, it's a public utility, but it should be transparent, I would think, operate with transparency and integrity. So in fact, when we went to the December 16th meeting at Middletown Township, the Board of Supervisors meeting, and the Sewer Authority presented their proposal for the plan with Ms. Funk, they said that they wanted to move forward with transparency and integrity and to meet frequently. So, we have taken them at their word, and so as we've looked back over our work in the past two months, I'm going to share with you some of our experiences, and you can be the judge whether we've experienced the information that we've gathered, whether we've experienced transparency and integrity. So, utilities, government entities, they have a responsibility to be transparent. I'm not used to dealing with government, so I looked it up. There's several ways that government entities, and I imagine utilities, have the responsibility to share information, to be transparent. One is to have data that they should be providing or have access to, to have that available to the public. One is to have open meetings. We know that. We appreciate the fact that you allow us to be here so long tonight. To have open communication, to have open records and access to records that may not be in the public domain, to have open budget information, and to have information about the elected officials. Who's running the shop? What decisions are they making? Who's voting for those decisions? When are those decisions being made? And the public should have information about all of that. Why? Why does that matter? Well, that's, why is because we're here tonight, because we as citizens and you as government officials need to make decisions that are informed decisions. We are informing you, hopefully, and hopefully you'll take that information and make informed decisions. If we lack information, or if information is withheld or presented in a deceptive way, then we cannot make informed decisions. Or if decisions are made in a void, then they're not informed. Well, that's just not smart, right? So, a few examples. The Sewer Authority, with regard to the responsibility to provide open data, when they came to the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, and I've also watched when they came here and presented, we actually made an ask of them, could you provide some financial data behind your presentation? Could you provide more information on your plan design? Could you provide some more information on your chemical processes? We don't know, we'll get back to you. Crickets. We've not heard anything. That's five weeks ago. Open meeting, financial, okay. So financial data, someone else is going to speak to that. We've heard a little bit about that. That is very important to everyone. It's important to Newtown for one reason. What is the cost rate change is going to be to you? It's important to us in Middletown and the other 12 municipalities involved, or 11 rather, because it will affect our rates. So, this is very important information. Open meetings, another responsibility of entities that govern or utilities. The responsibility to make meeting documents, agendas, and meetings available to us, meeting minutes available, I'm sorry. So, our legal representative already spoke to the information regarding right to know information, that there's no legal representative identified in the Sewer Authority to provide information that we've requested. The meeting minutes, quite frankly, are abysmal for the Sewer Authority. We cannot gain any meaningful information from them. The eminent domain acquisition of the property, that it was either acquired, that information was either held in the executive meetings that were not available, that information's not available to the public, or it's held in attachments or exhibits that right now no one is responding to our right to know, and it's going to be a matter for the legal process to unfold. So, there are legal, there are open meetings, and as we heard, that, you know, it's one thing to have a meeting, but if you don't document anything, or if you don't make that information available to the public, then, you know, you're not playing fair. So, we heard when they came to our meeting in Middletown, and quite frankly, we want to just make note, they didn't come because they wanted to share. Middletown Township invited them. They invited them because, that was December of 2024, so if we draw a timeline, our right to know as Middletown residents, keep in mind, the project, the thinking about the project seemed to have started, from what I can tell, first and second quarter of 2023, and Middletown Township found out about it in November 2024. Now, I know you guys knew about it a little bit earlier than that. That's our next-door neighbor. Our next-door neighbor. With all of the affluent going into Middletown, all of the impact in Middletown, and we're talking a year plus, and nobody said, Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, we'd like to inform you? How did they find out? Is the press here tonight? Thank you. The free press. The free press. They read an article in the newspaper. That's how the Board of Supervisors in Middletown Township found out about this. This is not transparency. This is not the way that you do business when you're dealing with the public and you want to play fair. Okay, open records. So, eminent domain, well, that's just, that's just a shame. So you had somebody building apartments, ready to get going, and that property was taken out right from underneath of them, and none of us had a voice. None of us had a say. Nobody in Middletown had a say. So as citizens, we can't speak up and share our thoughts and give government a chance to make informed decisions based on public comment, as we are tonight, when this already happened 14, 15 months ago. So, one of the other things that were shared was, well, I don't need to speak to the affluent. We already know that we have to be very careful, because they're proposing this plant will fit just right to match the zoning, but Ms. Funk did already allude to, and I just want to remind the board, that she probably will, and has already spoken to another municipality, and that this plant can be expanded, which would mean zoning ordinances. So your zoning board would be involved, which means you'll be involved. So, what would mean the plant's already there, and it's too late. So we have to stop the plant now. Ms. Funk stated that moving the capacity from the Shammany Interceptor would improve the environment. I can understand that, but there's a bit of deception there, because when we communicate openly, it's not just what we say, but it's also what we don't say. So what she's not saying, and has already been explained, I don't need to explain it again, is Bucks County Sewer and Water already has a reparation plan in effect to cover all 13 of its existing municipalities sewer waste. That project is underway, it's funded, it's paid for. So, we don't need it. We simply don't need it. So the plans are in place to take care of Newtown Barrow's waste, Newtown Township's sewer waste, and that's a half-truth, and I think that's not complete transparency either. Okay, the responsibility to share open budget. There's just one or two things that I don't think I've heard talked about. We have talked, Gloria just did a great job in elucidating the prospective costs of environmental regulations that we don't know about yet. That should be shared by the system. That was the plan. That's the Act 537 plan. I think that that's a wise decision. You guys have made that decision in the past. I would encourage you to continue to make the same wise decision. I don't know if Newtown residents have thought about, or the boards thought about, do you want to be paying personnel costs? Describe that in the budget for a treatment plan, planned. Do you want to be paying... Do you want to be paying bud, is it, do you know what those costs would be? Personnel costs and benefits costs and personnel management costs and, and for the first year, and then the second year, and then third year? Because they're only going to go up, right? So these are some budget costs that maybe you want to consider and would be unnecessary if you stay in the regional system. And then finally, a utility or government's responsibility to open with regard to its elected officials or its appointed officials in the case of the sewer authority. You know, we searched high and low, and maybe I don't understand because I'm not a government person, but we searched high and low for a governing document for the sewer authority. Like, how do they run their house? Wha, what is, who's responsible for what? Who's responsible for managing the right to know documents? We can't find a governing document. Maybe if you have one, it'd be great. I'll send you an email request and see if you could share it with us. That would be really helpful, it would be really interesting. The concern that there's missing information, that there was an eminent domain purchase in, in November of 20, I'm sorry, in August of 2023, and then we're going to EAC meetings in Newtown, and the EAC members don't even know about a plant. That, that's very concerning. Where's the missing loop of communication? And why is that? Why is that? How come Middletown Township is all over this? And your EAC's members were shocked and gratefully engaged? Gratefully engaged, which I'm very encouraged about. We want those members hopefully to work with our Middletown members because our Middletown EAC members are well-engaged. So at the end of the day, I think the big question is, what's really the motivation for this plant? We don't think it's financial, we can't figure that out. And we don't see a reason for the plant from a capacity standpoint. So I'll leave that for you to think about. I am worried about the autistic children, I'm a psychologist. I mentioned that before. They have different sensory, um, capacity and reactivity, and they're way too close to the plant, proposed plant. I'm just going to skip ahead and say, the board, I know there's some changes in the board, some of the same board as 1988, I think. Um, we as a community, we've come to you with objectivity, with hard science. We are unified in a purpose, and we've come with clear communication and with integrity of mind and purpose. We want to maintain our quality of life, and we're asking you to stop this unnecessary construction of a sewer plant. You've now heard new liabilities to our health and to health of our well-beloved parks and creeks. I've heard things here tonight, I've not heard that scare me more. There's 84,000 people between Middletown Township, Newtown Township, and Newtown Barrow. And I'm asking you on behalf of 84,000 people, we're counting on you to do what you did in 1988. You used Act 537, and you stopped the plant. We're asking you to stop the plant and preserve the quality of our life now and for years to come. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening. My name is Jim Walsh, resident of Swan Point, formerly a resident of Hampton Bridge. I've lived nearly my entire life along the Middletown Newtown border, and I've loved every minute of it. I went to St. Andrews when it was on Sycamore Street. I got my first communion in that church built in the eighties or 1800s. I went to Good No's with my friends at the basketball games. My kids go to St. Andrews now, in a much nicer school. Um, they go to Rita's with me, summer afternoons. Medical providers are all in Newtown, spent a lot of time there. And I don't have the great qualifications of a lot of my neighbors who are incredibly talented. I bring nothing to the table in terms of education, expertise. I am just a marine with bad knees and a civil litigator. And, um, I know enough to know when I need to get experts to tell us the facts and to support it with data, sound work that'll stand up under cross-examination. I'm not here to talk to you about any of those things. You've heard a lot about it. What I'm here to talk to you about is something that's been purported to be facts, unsupported by sound data, and wholly insufficient. And that is the cost benefits analysis that the authority is using to convince this board, Middletown Township, us, citizens of Newtown Barrow and Newtown Township, that this is a great economic decision, and it's not. It is a horrible economic decision, and it could be completely disastrous for every single one of the 9,000 ratepayers who incidentally are entirely, or almost entirely, this board's constituents. The engineer who's presenting, Middletown Township presented the chart, and I know that this board has seen that chart before, and I don't carry that chart because it is not worth the paper it's written on. Before we get into the chart and the financials though, I want to talk a little bit about what the trends are in the industry of the wastewater treatment industry. The fact is that deregionalization, in other words, withdrawing from a regional wastewater treatment system to own and operate a local municipal wastewater treatment plant is contrary to all the national trends in the industry. And this isn't anything I wrote research. It came from a white paper, which is a report published by a trade industry group. And this one happened to come out in October of 2022 by an industry, by a trade group called the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. That trade organization is a national organization representing public clean water, wastewater, and stormwater management and treatment public utilities. And in that white paper, which does a deep dive, it studies trends, issues from all different angles. It analyzes data, it takes deep dives on the case studies, and it discusses these issues for the industry, right? I, as a marine, had no need to know this information. But a lot of people in the world do. And what this industry, what this trade organization concluded, or at least supports, is regionalization. In other words, what the authority is doing right now. And the reason is quite simple, and it's economic. Because you get, you get, uh, what's it called? Economy of scales, thank you, an economy of scales, right? So right now, in the regional system, the maintenance responsibilities for all the treatment, all the consumables, right? Chemicals that need to be used to treat the wastewater in Philadelphia is being borne right now by all the citizens. Forty municipalities part of the current system that Newtown's a part of. That creates, that creates a lot of efficiencies. For one, it creates leverage, right? So when they're ordering these consumables on a regular basis, they're not ordering one, two, they're not at Wegmans buying, you know, one carton of eggs, they're at Sam's Club buying two 18-packs of eggs wrapped together and wondering whether they're ever going to eat them fast enough. They're almost, it's almost, it's almost like they're a wholesale purchaser, the level of volume. That will not be something that will exist for a 2.5 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant in Newtown Township. A local wastewater treatment plant in Newtown Township is going, likely be paying retail with no leverage and no power to negotiate those rates down. The expertise to run these plants, I mean, these plants aren't, aren't, they're not, they're run by specialists with extraordinary talent and expertise. People with extraordinary talent and expertise are not cheap. They want benefits, they want a competitive wage. Uh, right now, the salaries, benefits, pensions, all the individuals that treat the wastewater that comes through the Bucks County Sewer and Water System to Philadelphia is being shared by all the residents of the 13 municipalities that participate in this regional sewer system, of which Newtown is now a member, and the authority is advocating for you to leave. If Newtown builds its own wastewater treatment plant, Newtown will have the benefit of paying for that. And that, the salaries, benefits, pensions, workers' comp insurance, all those, all those, all those costs, that overhead, are going to be paid by only 9,000 ratepayers. So regionalization and the economy of scale reduces the redundancy of these special individuals who can do this kind of work. You heard a lot today about, uh, expected, anticipated changes in economic or environmental regulations, right? They're going to happen, there's no doubt about it. In fact, was it Ms. Turk, was Ms. Turk? Ms. Turk's talked about that is one of the chief reasons that we need to start our own wastewater treatment plant because all these environmental regulations are coming, and we don't want to pay as part of a regional system to comply with them. Well, here's the thing, those environmental regulations are not going away, and it's not like they're not going to apply to a 2.5 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant in Newtown Township. They're going to apply there too. So and microplastics are required to be taken away from the wastewater before it's turned affluent and discharged into lakes. Philly is going to have to comply with that, and so is this little Newtown wastewater treatment plant. The only difference is, the regional system is going to be, the cost is going to be borne by, at that point, I guess it would be 12 municipalities participating in the system. But in Newtown Township, the wastewater treatment plant that the authority would have this board agree with is going to be borne entirely by 9,000 ratepayers. That's it. Now, going back to this cost benefits analysis that Ms. Turk provided on the chart that I will not carry with me. She projected out over the life cycle, how, claiming that it would be far cheaper for us, for Newtown Township to have their own wastewater treatment plant. And that Bucks County Sewer and Water, their rates are going to continue to go up at, I think her number was 6.2% per year. And the rates for Newtown's projected increase once the system, presumably, once the plant gets commissioned, would only go up 1.1%. Now, it's pretty attractive, I know. 1.1% versus 6.2%. But if you look behind the curtain at the numbers, where does Bucks, where does Newtown, where does the authority get this confidence that it can maintain a 1.1% rate increase every year after the plant is commissioned to operate a plant, which is something that, by the way, they haven't done in decades? Based upon what, where, where's the, where's the, where's the past performance to, that would indicate future ability to reach this goal? And what she told us, what she told this board was that it was because their operating expenses for the, their authority is very small and that the money, 70% of their operating expenses goes to Bucks County Sewer and Water, which includes the treatment of the sewage in Philadelphia. Now, that's 70%, a large chunk, that's not going to go away because the wastewater treatment plant is going to presumably treat wastewater. So whatever Philadelphia was doing, now, this proposed 2.5 million gallon per day plant is going to have to do. She also said that typically their expenses, operating expenses just on the authority alone typically, you know, go up 2% to 3% per year, which is not necessarily an unreasonable number because the cost of inflation, at least according to the Fed, for this period of time forecasting 10, 20 years in the future is going to be about 2.51%. So to say your, your, you know, your, your, you know, your operating expenses are going to go up 2% to 3%, seems pretty reasonable. Yet somehow, for reasons I can't really explain, and I can't deduce because we don't have a lot of information coming from the authority, is that they are, they're claiming that they're going to perform wastewater treatment for the first time in decades on a brand-new plant, and they're going to do it at a rate that's less than half, half the 2.51% rate of, rate of inflation. It's, it's made up of whole cloth. So questionable is that maybe? There's another side of the equation because she's also claiming, she's also forecasting a 6.2% increase, rate increase from Bucks County Sewer and Water. Now, one would expect that that information would come from Bucks County Sewer and Water because I don't think any utility would have, would not have forecasts, right? We plan in the future, Act 235, we plan for how many million gallons per day on average do we say? These, you know, industries like this, they plan in the future. She didn't ask Bucks County Sewer and Water what their forecasts were going forward. She took historical data from 2001 through 2019. And on average, 6.2%. And we're just going to take this number and we're going to forecast it forward. Which is interesting, which is, that's the interesting thing about percentages, numbers, regression to the mean. She didn't include any data past 2019 because according to her, 2019 to the present, there were rate credits. So there were no rate increases, and that was the result of litigation. And that, so you weren't, rate increases were not, did not occur at that time, not because of any kind of, uh, operating expense. It was completely divorced from the realities of wastewater treatment. Instead, it was a credit for prior overages. But curiously, she included the years when those prior overages were incurred as if, as if they represented actual, true wastewater treatment expenses. So we're cherry picking, at least from what I'm seeing, she's cherry picking the data points that support her conclusion. 62.2% also ignores the fact that for the last 10 years, with or without 2019, rate increases from Bucks County Sewer and Water Authority are only on average 1.2%. Obviously, it would be far lower if she had considered from 2000 through 2005 when there were no rate increases. Curiously though, I think we taught, we heard earlier that despite the fact that Water Authority didn't get any rate increases from Bucks County Sewer and Water, the authority itself though, increased the rates on the ratepayers. And I think I heard the gentleman talk about 47%. None of which justified by modifying or paying back Bucks County Sewer and Water because they didn't rate, they increased the rates. That is pure money to the authority. And of course, we don't have any window into their financials because we don't have right-to-know officer assigned to them. So we don't know where that money went. You know, perhaps it went to buy the land, perhaps it went to a fun field trip out to Walcut, Texas in October, and so no report could be created. Who knows? There's just no window into it. Worst thing of all is that turns out Bucks County Sewer and Water does provide a 10-year perspective look at what they expect their anticipated rate increases to be. And they expected, and those anticipated rate increases also included... also included all the repairs that were necessary, maintenance of the facilities. And I apologize, I do not have that figure in front of me, but that figure is, if I'm recalling correctly, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, 2.8%, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Certainly under three. 2.8% above the rate of inflation, without a doubt. Progressed, projected forward. Fed says it's going to be 2.51, and Bucks County Water and Sewer says, yeah, we're probably going to be at 2.8. Closer to the historical rate increases of 1.2 on average? Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, that is a different universe than 6.2% annually. That 6.2% annually number is made up from it's funny business with numbers. I've got, if I, if I could approach. Ladies and gentlemen, what you're looking at is a chart similar to the chart that I will not carry. And it does me, us, no good to put numbers in front of you that I make up, I cherry pick, I can't explain. Those numbers did not come from me. The numbers you're looking at, that are charted, representing the wastewater treatment plant proposal, are the authority's numbers. That's what Ms. Turk puts up, that's what she represents. I'm not telling you the right, I think you know how I feel about them, you can reach your own conclusions. The numbers that represent the cost of staying with Bucks County Sewer and Water are not my numbers. They come from Bucks County Sewer and Water's ten-year look-forward plan. The one that Ms. Turk didn't think was important enough to consider, or maybe she did, I don't know. But that represents the 2.8% projection forward, including all maintenance. You've already heard them talk about the Nishamani Interchange, or whatever it's called. Money's been spent, work's been committed, work's been committed, money's been committed to the work, it's been approved by the D E P. That includes everything. And as you can see at the end of this chart, it's still cheaper just with the regional system, which is what you're doing now. That is the most conservative number. The most conservative number. It still results in the Newtown 2.5 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant, costing your ratepayers 20% more. And that is not, without considering some pretty big-ticket expenses Ms. Turk seems to have overlooked. I talked earlier that, that, about the compliance. That was a big reason to move.
I would like to ask if you could summarize your point, because there's a lot more people here. And if everybody talks for fifteen minutes, then we will never get out of here. But believe me when I say, we understand your points. So, if you could just summarize?
Another two minutes and that's, I'll be done. Uh, a few things that weren't considered that might seem like big-ticket items. The cost of breach of Bucks County Sewer and Water Agreement, right? No early opt-out, no early buyout. They've invested money in the Nishamani Interchange, relying upon representations from the authority about future capacity needs for Newtown Mutual, um, the Newtown Authority. They made those changes, or have committed money to those changes, they're going to want money back. So, the authority is going, through its ratepayers, are going to pay for that, whether they use it or not, it doesn't matter. And it's going to cost money to pay lawyers, and it's going to cost a settlement. So those are some things that don't appear to be in Ms. Turk's considerations. The cost of lawsuits. There's, within a 1.7 mile ring, there's, uh, or with, you know, within the 1.7 mile ring, there's 12,000 to 14,000 residents. Uh, .3, there's several hundred residents. If my house smells one time, I'm filing a complaint. Um, if my neighbors tell me that their house smells, they can join me. We've got enough people with tremendous expertise, uh, and that are really committed to not being a victim. We didn't move to this nuisance, this nuisance is moving towards us. So with that, what I would ask that the supervisors, at every opportunity, reject all actions by the authority in moving forward this project. Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break, so if you'll hold on, there's, we'll be right back. Thank you, everybody, for hanging with us. I'm going to ask that everybody keep the rest of their comments to two minutes. Uh, if not, we will not be able to accommodate all of you tonight. So, uh, you can come back at any time, but it's 9:30, so please, two minutes if you can. Thank you.
Sorry. It's very risky getting up here after all these very intelligent people, but I just wanted to say, I'm a Swan Point resident for forty years. All these people, we raised our kids together. It was like a little slice of heaven. And we say this all the time, that, um, it was the greatest thing we ever did, was buy a house in Swan Point. Um, but as I was going to say, the people who spoke before me were just incredibly intelligent, their research just amazingly, and the personal accounts were riveting, just riveting. And I just hope that the board feels the same way I do, that anyone with a moral compass can have a project to go through, after listening to all of this. That's, um, and I just, I just think, I'm sorry, I am not, like I said, these people are all engineers and very smart, but, um, just emotional about, um, my future, the kids' future, um, just destroying this wonderful thing that we had for so many years. And, um, the only thing that gives me hope is, um, that, I understand you were part of the, um, getting rid of plastics in Newtown? And if that was something near and dear to your heart, and that was, that's like one-hundredth of what this would be, of what this project would be. So, I hope that all of you, um, just put your heart behind this and see where we're coming from and how we feel, and just do the right thing. Like, like sometimes people don't do the right thing, but it's in your power to do that. So, that's all. Under two minutes.
We need your name for the, we need your name.
Patty Archie Diacano, and Swan Point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And please vote the right way.
Hello, Bob Onberger. I am a little less than 3,000 feet from the site. It's Silver Lake in Newtown. Just a bad idea. You know, I got kids, everybody here has kids. You heard everything everybody's saying. Just don't do it. It's easy. Just hit the easy button. StopThePlant.net. Thank you.
Now's your time. You're always welcome back. Wait, I might have refreshments.
I talked for ten minutes earlier, and I promise I will go quickly. Ninety seconds. zoning ordinance sets forth the requirements, right? I think, I can't, I don't remember if it's a special exception to allow a wastewater treatment facility in the O R District. I can't remember, I'm looking it up right now, but I'm trying my best on some short Wi-Fi bands. But, one of the requirements to be met is that it would have to be deemed a necessity or an emergency. And I think, overall, what has been said tonight, and I think what you can all understand yourselves, is there's zero necessity. That's it. Thank you.
Bill Reed, Swan Point Development. First, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to we're not township residents. First, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to be, that we're not township residents, and treating us respectfully. I just have a question, basically asked at the very beginning of the meeting, and I hope you'll answer it, is, does this project have to come before this board? Can you answer that? I mean, I know this is not before you, I know it's not an agenda, I know plans before you, whether it's from the authority, whether it's from the zoning hearing board, or the planning commission, or anybody else, but at some point in the process, and I don't understand, I know the process is somewhat, but I'm not an expert on it, will this project have to come before this board at any point?
Mr. Solicitor, could you go through the procedures, please?
If a sewage treatment plant was desired to be erected in the township, that would require land development approval that would come before this board, because this board rules on all land development plans. Of course, the law says that if a land development plan meets all applicable ordinance requirements, it must be approved. But this board will have that land development plan in front of it. I don't know, and our speaker before just mentioned, that there may be zoning required. I don't know whether variances are required, dimensional and use variances, special exception, conditional use, I don't know. If any application is filed to the zoning hearing board, this board will have the opportunity to decide whether to take a position on that application or not.
What if, what if the Board of Supervisors were to deem this as a unhealthy project to the citizens of the township and the surrounding area? Is that grounds for denial? In other words, it's not, it's not for the betterment of the health and welfare of our citizens?
It's arguable. It's a factor. Health, safety, and welfare is something that's taken into consideration when you're talking about zoning, more so than land development, but certainly in zoning decisions in the zoning hearing board. It's possible.
In that case, would the sewer authority have to prove that it was for the betterment of the health and welfare of the township?
The sewer authority would have to prove that it meets the objective criteria of the ordinance that's applicable to this use. Let's take, for example, if it was a special exception. They would have to prove that the use is by special exception in the zoning district in which it's located, and they would have to prove that they meet all of the objective criteria listed in the zoning ordinance for a sewage treatment plan. If among them is a health, safety, and welfare issue, then it is their burden to prove that.
Thank you for the answer, and then just, I would just follow that up with suggesting that you might want to invite the authority to come, and whether, I know they were already here once before, but maybe give you further informational briefing, and lay out their plans. You could ask them questions, they could provide you with more information than maybe they've provided you so far. And, because our fear is that it's going to get to the point of no return, and it's just going to be a boulder rolling down the hill, and nobody can stop it. Maybe by inviting them to informational session, maybe you could get a feel, a grasp of what their plans are, and what the, just what the extent of everything is, and, just a suggestion. Thank you very much.
Any other business that any member would like to discuss? Hearing none. I call this meeting adjourned.